Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. It was properly posted on October 9th. And we have some real dignitaries today to lead us in our prayer pledge. Just go ahead and read who we have before us today is Carson Wheeler, who's a 10th grade homeschool student and a six-year member of the Luther 4-H Club, where he has served his local club president and is the current representative at large for Oklahoma County 4-H. Carson's main 4-H project includes goats. At the 2017 Fall Oklahoma County Livestock Show, he received the grand champion breeding market goat. He was also the 2017 Senior 4-H Hall of Fame recipient for Oklahoma County. So Carson, if you'll come forward, and then we'll also have Karen is at Devilla. And she is a junior at Putman City West. She's been active in 4-H for seven years with Memorial Wonders 4-H Club, where she currently serves as the local president and serves as vice president for Oklahoma County 4-H. Karen's main project areas include food, nutrition, and gardening. She has recently began plans to start a series of healthy living and gardening workshops for kids that are in need. She has taught several workshops already this year, and she recently won the Senior Leadership Award for Oklahoma County 4-H. So Karen, if you'll come forward. And then finally, we have Aleah Mitchell, who's a senior homeschool student and a member of 4-H Club. She has been in 4-H for four years, where she has served the Oklahoma County 4-H reporter and is serving as the current Oklahoma County 4-H Teen Council President and the Southwest District 4-H President. Aleah's main project is citizenship, and her focus has been her community service project called Books to the Rescue, where she collects books and other comfort items for children who have been through difficult circumstances. Aleah recently won the 4-H Project Area Citizenship/Incitizenship, and she also received the honor of being named this year's Oklahoma County Senior 4-H Hall of Fame winner. Aleah, if you'll come forward. And so we'll start off with Carson leading the prayer and Karen with our pledge allegiance, then we'll have the proclamation.
Dear Lord, we come to you today thankful for all you, all that you have provided for us. Lord, we are thankful for our leaders and their willingness to serve. We pray that they understand their need for you and that they will seek your guidance. Thank you for our 4-H leaders, parents, and 4-H members who have committed, commit to make the best better. May we always be positive examples to others. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom to us to use the gifts you have given us wisely. Lord, thank you for your protection and thank you for the servicemen and women in uniform. We pray that you will continue to protect our troops and all those who serve to protect our country. We pray for guidance for our country, county, and cities and our leaders. We pray that in all we do that we honor you, Lord. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's made, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you remain standing and join me in the 4-H pledge? I pledge my head to clearer thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you very much. Will we be seated? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Whereas across the nation, 4-H is the nation's largest youth development organization. And whereas the Oklahoma Cooperative Extension Service System has conducted 4-H programs through the state land-grant universities for 108 years with the mission to help young people acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes which will help them become self-directing, productive members of society. And whereas, the overall mission of the Oklahoma 4-H program is to help our youth grow to become healthy, happy, responsible adults. And whereas, the tradition of volunteerism associated with 4-H has continued to spread across the state with over 150,000 urban, suburban, and rural Oklahoma youth and more than 6,000 volunteers with, from diverse cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds involved statewide to make the best better. And whereas, the Oklahoma County 4-H program reached more than 15,000 youth this year through the 20 4-H Clubs' school enrichment and 4-H youth outreach programs. And whereas, through 4-H, Oklahoma County communities continue to benefit as a local, as local youth and adult volunteers to help through organizations like the Children's Hospital Foundation, Kids in Need Foundation, Oklahoma Regional Food Bank, Infant Crisis Center, Ronald McDonald House, Positive Tomorrow's, Youth Services of Oklahoma County, City Rescue Mission, Special Care, and many others. And whereas, 4-H has been helping Oklahoma's youth learn, grow, and work together to generate a positive and successful future for all of us for more than 100 years. And whereas, 4-Hers are growing true leaders. Kids across America are making a difference, large and small, in their lives, schools, and communities. Let us recognize these kids for the good they do, their courage to try new things and never give up. Let us give more kids the chance to show true leadership and make a measurable difference right here in Oklahoma County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County do hereby proclaim October 2017 Oklahoma County 4-H Month and urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program which gives youth the chance to learn together and on their own as part of Oklahoma County 4-H and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state land-grant system.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So move. Move, we adopt it.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Just as a housekeeping measure, that was item number five, which we've, I need to go back and approve the minutes for October 2nd.
Move approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Did you need any pictures or is there anything that you wanted to do, Angie? Okay. Line us up. Because I think you have a reception you're starting to plan for. Is that right? Does anybody want to talk? Inform the public. Yeah, that would be good. Okay. Let's get Mr. Hooton and Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Warren up here. Can you get us this way? You had a microphone for a nose. Here we go. Three, two, one, cheese. Everybody stand up straight. Tell me the end. Good to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was a great prayer. Would one of you like to make an announcement to tell everybody about your reception? Not all at once.
Well, we're having a reception after this event, and it's in the back, and we have food, and we have the 4-Hers who are going to tell you about their different projects. And just, you know, thank you for allowing us to come in and do this.
Thank you.
I just want to say, in a time when there's been all this protest about standing and setting and stuff for the National Anthem, I just appreciate your patriotism. I appreciate everything you do for the community and how you have pride and how you're trying to stand for good values and express positive vibes throughout the community instead of a lot of negativity. So thank you very much for what you do. Okay, items six through 14 are the consent docket items.
Move the consent docket.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Tyler, do we have some folks here with us for these planning items?
I believe we have at least one.
Okay. With the board's permission, maybe let's go ahead and do that since they've had to wait a little long for us to go through this. You want to do item 25? Be sensitive to the public's time.
Good morning. Item 25. Okay, this is a request by the Planning Commission for you to approve the Mayflower Market. It's located 178th and MacArthur. This project is a commercial venue, and they have also submitted a fee in lieu of road widening that's required for all, excuse me, commercial projects. They submit this fee depending on what the situation is, depending whether it's feasible to even do the road or later on if you know another project is coming up where there's a road widening that's going to take place. These fees are set up in order for the county to go ahead and do those things at a later time. But at this particular phase of the project is asking for you to approve it and place the plat on file. There is a gentleman from the engineering firm, Crafton Toll, to speak to it if you'd like.
You want to come forward, sir?
Good morning.
Morning.
Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. And obviously, this is just a final plat to conform with the approved preliminary plats, conform with the zoning, and so with that, we just ask for your approval.
And this is in District 3, and we've watched this development shape, take shape for actually several years.
Quite a while.
So I would move, be happy to move item 25.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Item 26 is the final plat of Council Meadows, which is a residential plat. And this plat has large acreages on it and is just a routine plating process for residential.
I'll move item 26.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Item 26 is the final plat of Council Meadows, which is a residential plat. And this plat has large acreages on it and is just a routine plating process for residential.
I'll move item 26.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I guess there was no public here to speak on item 26. Okay. All right. I thought there might be more than that. Resuming the docket. District 1.
Yes, Commissioner, this is a change order on a bridge project. Stacy, I believe it's within the permissible limits?
Yes, this is a bridge in District 1 that ODOT's actually overseeing for us, and they actually let the project, we have an overrun on some of the concrete items.
Move the item.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, I apologize. Item 16, I'd like to defer for one week. I accidentally told the folks from the Crutchell Community Foundation the meeting was tomorrow. I had looked at my calendar wrong, so I apologize. So we can defer.
I'll be happy to move, defer for one week.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
District 3.
District 3 has a couple of items on the agenda. I'm going to defer to the county engineer just to give us a quick update.
Okay.
Yeah, the first one is something new. It's a wastewater agreement with the city of Oklahoma City and the developer. It's actually the development that you just approved. Basically, our part of it is we're just acknowledging that they are moving utilities into our jurisdiction. And then there's a paragraph about property rights where we wouldn't claim a property right or try to seize their asset. There was some other language in there that the district attorney removed. Couple of sentences, it's not there anymore, so the district attorney has reviewed this. Oklahoma City's had utilities in our jurisdiction for some time without such agreements, so I don't know what's really prompted these agreements, but I understand there are more coming. So as we approve different plats going forward, this is kind of going to be kind of a standard document. I don't see any landmines in it, but...
You want to go back and seize all those prior that didn't have agreements?
Sure.
That might set a bad precedent, but I think this is a good agreement. It's, it makes sense in that sometimes it's easier for a utility in another city to serve an unincorporated area, which we are at this location. This is that same, same location where we just accepted the final plat, so I would move approval of item 17.
Commissioner, may I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Stacy? I was looking at this, and it makes sense now that the market during the previous item. But my question has to do with, and I'm sure the developers are aware, but it talks about if this agreement is ever not extended, then a utility or a water assessment district would be formed. So my question has to do with, what does that do to the county, A, if anything, and B, what notifications other than this would the homeowners or those landowners that are affected by that assessment district being formed be given? And is there an opportunity then for them to not do that? Or are we locking them into something in the event the three parties in this agreement would not extend it?
That may be the genesis of where this came from, because the original plat that they tried to approve some years ago was the commercial corner and about 200 homes.
Right.
It's now a commercial corner and six homes, so it's not quite as lucrative of a utility extension for the city. So I think that's why they put the language, if this doesn't work out, that then the assessment district is the correct avenue.
And is the assessment district that would be contemplated in this agreement not being extended for just the portion of the retail, or is it also the six homes?
It would have to be the six homes as well, because they're part of this sewer system.
And so what we're entering, we're potentially entering into something that may force a homeowner to do something that they otherwise, at this point, I would assume have the choice to form, right? They would come to us, they would ask...
That's how those assessment districts work. And then, of course, they pay all the costs, but we do have to collect that assessment.
And be like a road assessment?
Yes.
So, okay.
I see the engineers remain. Do you want to speak to this?
Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll. I represent Mayflower Market. Unfortunately, I did not represent Oklahoma City. I'm not sure I can answer your question in terms of legalities with that. It's my understanding that it's just standard language. The improvements are already built and are already in.
Right.
So I think, it's my understanding that it's just simply a fallback in case the city of Oklahoma City, for whatever reason, were to default and could not maintain those improvements is kind of my understanding of it. So I don't think there's any likelihood or reality of that. I think it's just a provision put in for whatever scenario that that might possibly happen.
The people that are being served by this line are going to be paying a monthly...
Exactly.
...expense to the city. If the city, for whatever reason, failed to maintain the line or had to go to an assessment district, then they would still be paying the same thing to the assessment district.
Exactly.
So you understand that.
Right. I just...
It's a method of providing the service.
Previously...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Previously, apparently, we've not been a party to these types of agreements, and sewer or water has been provided. And visiting with staff, they said this was really more of a notification process that the city would utilize in the event they needed to access their line on county property. We appear to have those in place now, and I'm just trying to figure out what liability there might be for the county at some point, especially in light of the assessment district. We're signing off on an agreement that says you'll form an assessment district. And just as long as they know that going into it, they're fine. And then the other part of that would be, in the event that I'm one of those six homeowners and I sell my home, all of that, I would assume, I'm not a real estate person, so maybe Leonard could help, would be subject to disclosure, that somebody couldn't come back on the county and say, "Well, when I bought this, I didn't know I had to do X." I thought, so...
I'm not sure if that would, that document will show up in a title, a title opinion, but often they do when there are public utilities that are provided, and, you know, along with oil and gas leases and, you know, easements and all kinds of things. But that would be a likely result.
I think there's a memorandum that's part of the agreement that every end user will execute as well as another agreement with the city of Oklahoma City under those provisions. That would show up in title reports, so it'll be fully disclosed. And I just got off the phone a little bit ago after Stacy had kind of questioned a little bit of why now, as opposed to, you know, there were some that were serviced in the 90s, and I don't think you all were a party to those agreements. And the city of Oklahoma City just confirms they have, this is a brand-new agreement. They feel like the other one was outdated, was not adequate for today, so that they assured me that all new ones, they specifically mentioned the MacArthur Park that's coming and something about a Piedmont Schools, that they're going to send this same wastewater agreement to you all as well to execute on that one, just as acknowledgement that they're providing a service and charging, you know, residents of Oklahoma County that aren't in Oklahoma City proper, and just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of the agreement, and this is how that it's functioning. So I think that answers why now and not before. I think it's just the attorneys at Oklahoma City and Utilities Trust have decided that this is the document that we want to move forward. And like I say, it's not any cost Oklahoma County. I'm not an attorney, so, but it's, it at least explained to me that there's really no liability on the county's part. It's just more of acknowledgement, so...
Right. I think this, this document being of record probably gives the public more notice than they've had, you know, in the past as to the existence of these situations, so...
Exactly.
Okay. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
I think I've already moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Benefits and Retirement has a lease agreement on a copier.
We've got item 18.
Oh, I apologize.
All right.
Sorry.
Item 18 also is from District 3. It's to accept the right-of-way, right-of-entry documents. This is going to be for the new intersection. We intend to build it 178th and Meridian. And I think these are the final, these are the final...
No, these are the right entries so that we can get utilities started. The actual easements that you'll purchase will be on the next meeting or two.
I'd move item 18.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, a renewal for a copier in benefits.
Move item 19.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
20 is to approve the treasurer and the clerk to appropriate reimbursed funds from the city schools and special purpose districts. Is there a motion?
Anyone want to present on that, or...
Chair Danny.
Good morning. This is an annual resolution that this board adopts. It allows the board to appropriate funds reimbursed back to the, to the election board within general fund, allows them to appropriate those funds back to their budget.
Thank you, Danny.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, I'll move item 20.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, there is probably a presentation from the clerk's office about using HR. You want to speak to that, Mr. Hooton?
Good morning, you all. We've been meeting with Dan Matthews and through council and other opinions that we think it's the best if all of us move towards that central HR department, and so that's what we're wanting to do. They'll, it will take a short period of time to, to move to that totally in that we do have people that offer those services on our floor right now, but we'd like to move it all over to HR for the county. Are there any questions?
Dan, do you have anything you want to say about it? Steps we need to take or things we need to consider?
Got to get to the scooter.
I'll race you later. They beat crutches, though, huh?
There'll be a race later.
Thank you. We're, we are willing to take on the additional responsibility. However, we haven't finalized, in my eyes, we haven't finalized exactly what it is that the clerk's office wants us to do, and we'd like to make sure that we're all in agreement on that. Additionally, we're at the point that we will probably have to add another staff member to handle that, because we've added the court clerk, about 125 people, and this will be another 50 to plus people onto that. So that more than doubles our workload. So we're at the point now that we're going to have to have some additional staffing to handle all of that.
Well, maybe that's something else you can discuss with the county clerk, because I think we funded him to do the HR, so...
Correct.
That's, I would, in my mind, that would just be a simple transfer, you know, and budget issue that you guys can resolve.
Correct. And then the other, the other issue is that we would want the board to approve us to have full munis access to their employees as well.
Is that in this item, or is it covered, or we need a separate agenda item for that?
Well, it's not covered by this.
Okay.
If you haven't finalized your scope, perhaps we should defer this until you get that done. Is that...
Perhaps we could defer for one week.
All right.
If that's okay.
I'll be happy to move that we defer item 21 to one, for one week.
Second.
And realize we possibly need subsequent agenda items to complete that, too. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I appreciate the effort, though, Mr. Hooton and Mr. Warren already for...
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
This is a major step in the right direction to reduce duplicity in government services. All right. Emergency management needs to approve Jim Hawke as a citizen volunteer member, team member. Morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, John Comstock in the emergency management office. Jim Hawke is the recently retired fire chief for Adel City. Served with distinction there for 35 years, has assisted the citizens of Oklahoma County with a number of efforts mostly involving fire rescue. And he has put in an application with us to serve the citizens of Oklahoma County for free as a volunteer in our office, and we would really be able to use him in our office.
Sure.
Are there any questions?
The Price is Right. Move item 22.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Engineering.
Take it, John.
Yes. Item 23 is some oil royalties for the county. Recommend you approve.
Move item 23.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And item 24 is a change order with our maintenance contractor that's doing the ceiling on this building. He's getting close to being complete with the front. He'll be moving to the alley soon, and there could be some conflicts between our contractor and the city's downtown train contractor, especially if the Hudson Gate is closed. And if we, my contractor has alley blocked, and you're using Harvey, that's not going to work. So we're going to move our contractor to working only at night after, while this operation is closed, so that there is no conflict. So approve all the change order. This actually went before the infrastructure committee as well.
And just for the record, this is, this contractor's doing the S-E-A-L-I-N-G on the building, not the C-E-I-L-I-N-G, right? Both sound the same.
Okay.
Move item 24.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We've done the planning items. The Policy and Governance Committee, Steve.
Good morning.
Morning.
In July of this year, we had a vacancy in the IT department. That vacancy was the director level, and this board decided to appoint two interim co-directors, and that was Dane Coffey and Rich Stewart. The Policy and Governance, we have been kind of looking at how this new structure is going, and it's going very well. So what our recommendation, the Policy and Governance Committee recommendation of this board would be that we would continue to evaluate the new structure and then...
In July of this year, we had a vacancy in the IT department. That vacancy was the director level. And this board decided to appoint two interim co-directors, and that was Dane Coffey and Rich Stewart. The Policy and Governance, we have been kind of looking at how this new structure is going, and it's going very well. So, what our recommendation, the Policy and Governance Committee recommendation of this board would be that we would continue to evaluate the new structure, and then, on or before July of next year, we would get back with the board and possibly make a recommendation and give you a follow-up.
Sounds good.
Comments?
Certainly seemed to be working well, from my perspective.
It does.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Is there, there's no motion needed for that, is there?
Probably to receive the...
Okay. Okay.
Okay, yes, I'd move to follow the recommendation, item twenty-seven.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for your good job. Sheriff's Office has a lease agreement between the sheriff and the Tribune Broadcasting for the lease of a radio tower space. Is there a motion?
Looks like this is to, basically, we're being donated space from Tribune Broadcasting on their tower.
Good morning, Commissioners, yes, that's, that's correct. It's essentially donating the space, but because it's a contract, we've asked the dollar be placed for the lease amount. And this will allow us to put equipment up on a very centrally-located tower to help increase our radio coverage.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. And John, this is a part of a pilot project that you all are doing?
That is correct. If you guys remember, about a year ago, this board approved a pilot project for a seven-hundred megahertz radio system to test it out to determine whether or not that would be a viable option to replace an aging UHF system and bring us into the digital era in radio communications and provide our deputies with a much-needed improvement to coverage, but also reliability on the radio system. And this is, initially, we're looking at the District Three tower, and we ran into some issues with that tower. And so, this is the free tower essentially that we were able to obtain.
And, and so, this is a continuation of that? You haven't made a decision yet on radios?
That is correct. We haven't had a tower to put any of the equipment up on because of the issues we ran into engineering-wise on District Three.
And...
And so, this will, this will be that project, yes.
Okay, and then, the other part of that is, are you working with Emergency Management to make sure that everybody can talk to everybody? I know when we responded to fires at times, there's been difficulty, A, in coverage, because we don't have the towers or the equipment, and then, actually being able to talk to people. So, or, everything is a coordinated effort?
I know that I've had numerous conversations with Emergency Management. Mr. Comstock can attest to that. And if, in fact, this, this pilot project is a successful endeavor, those conversations will definitely increase and pick up...
Okay.
Moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'd move approval, and I'd express our public appreciation to Tribune Broadcasting for their civic sense of responsibility.
I'd agree. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Social Service has, I think this is the remaining community service grant.
Move item twenty-nine.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reoccurring items, is there a motion to approve the claims?
Move the claims.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No change to the blanket?
Move the blankets.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other citizens to appear before the county commissioners? Seeing none, Commissioner Comets, District Three.
Mr. Comstock and I were actually at a meeting this last week up in Tulsa. It was the nine-one-one management board and a bunch of people that manage the nine-one-one system and make answers to all those emergency calls. And Mr. Jackson keeps that up and running over at the sheriff's office. And there are some amazing things that are happening in the next generation of nine-one-one. Right now, people, that was initially set up so people could call from their landlines, and the answerers would know where they were. And nobody uses landlines much anymore, so the next generation of nine-one-one has to deal with cell phones, and they move around all the time. So, it, we used to use triangulation with cellphone towers, and these days, you can even beat that by using satellite reception to the cellphone transmissions and know exactly where that cellphone is located, even to the point of height, as it, as it was being explained to me, and I'll be real brief on this. But our cell phones actually recognize barometric pressure. And so, if someone was in the Devon Tower and had a heart attack on the forty-second floor, their phone could call theoretically the nine-one-one center. And if we had next generation in place, they, the phone would know to send people to the forty-second floor, because that's where the phone is. So, it's, it's an amazing reality that we're getting to. And it's, it's time well spent, and we have some amazing people out there that know how to operate these kinds of equipment. So, I was very pleased to participate in that training session and learned a lot, so, thank you.
Thank you. District One.
No, thank you.
All right, thanks to Mr. Hooton for hosting this reception that we're about to attend, which will be in his office down the hall here. Is there any new business? If not, I'll have the opening of the bids, Amber.
Morning.
Morning.
Just have one bid to open this morning, it's CW one-eight-zero-three-one for lawn maintenance supplies, countywide, Simplot, and Canadian Valley Turk Farm. That concludes the bids.
I move that they be tabulated and returned with recommendations.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, being well past nine-ten, I'll call the Public Buildings Meeting together. It was properly posted on October ninth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October second?
So move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, is there a resolution here to depose of equipment and inventory for the metro parking?
Yes, I move item four, disposing of certain equipment that is beyond repair.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five is designating Ashley McMichael as a receiving officer.
So move.
That's replacing Linda Hollingsworth. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Six is the financial statements for periods ending August thirty-first of twenty-seventeen and sixteen.
Will we receive Mr. Landreth's financial statement?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Will we approve the claims?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard for the PBA? If not, is there any new business?
Will we adjourn?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. We have items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two. And I would like to move that, as to items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and forty, that we proceed as discussed in executive session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. As to item thirty-nine and forty-one, I would like to move that we take no action on those cases.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. As to item forty-three, I beg your pardon, forty-two, I would move that we settle that claim for three-hundred and thirty-nine dollars even.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And on item forty-three, I would move that we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.